...by Commissioner Heiburger, please stand there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphones if you haven't, and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly, and if you need a listening device, Robert is here to help with that. This morning Kirsten Kapmeier won't be here because he and his wife had a lovely baby girl yesterday, and looks like Sarah, you're not going to be around too long, are you?
No, tough everywhere you go.
Do you want to investigate what's going on in the State's Attorney's Office?
(laughing).
With that, we'll go to routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve routine business, or the, and the agenda, I guess. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of December 3rd, 2013. Is it approved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from 12:03. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $426,148.61.
Pay the bills with a comment.
Either a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, today we have nearly 280 bills in the area of mental health, and I've invited Scott Peters to come in to discuss that for just a moment.
Scott, would you like to come forward now for a minute?
They range from $15 to $4,200.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Commissioners. Scott Peters, Minnehaha County Board of Behavioral Health, actually, so Minnehaha, Lincoln County Board of Behavioral Health, because we have a combined board. To date through November, we've had 1,053 petitions for commitment. Eight hundred and eight of those involve Minnehaha County residents, about 108 involve out-of-state or out-of-county residents that Minnehaha County has handled. The remaining petitions, 43 of them are Lincoln County residents, and 94 are out-of-county residents that Lincoln County has handled in 69th Street of Ver- Behavioral Health, and they pay all the expenses for those. But out of the 916 petitions that we had through November, of course, state and federal due process requires that we have a petition for commitment and that we have an evaluation of those petitions within the first 24 hours. We house them at Avera Behavioral Health Center unless they're full, or at Sanford or McKennan Hospital if they've had a serious medical issue from an overdose or suicide attempt. And so, the bills come from those evaluations by a mental health professional, their administrative costs of me reviewing petitions and taking reports and deciding dispositions. We have occasionally a hearing in Minnehaha County, or actually at Behavioral Health, but if we have hearings, most of the time they're on patients that we send down to the Human Services Center. And of course, there's a $600 a month charge for patients at the Human Services Center. So, that's largely where the bills come from. The largest bill here, the $4,200 bill, was a seven-day stay of a patient in McKennan Hospital for medical issues after an overdose. And so, they range, as Commissioner Barth has said, from $15 to $4,200 this time. But I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Do you know what the increase has been in percentage over the last few years? I mean, have we been seeing a sharp increase in the last five, six years?
In costs or petitions?
In petitions.
Actually, the number of petitions has gone down with the implementation of the Mobile Crisis Team. Mobile Crisis sees from 30 to 50 patients a month, and so on an average of 40, probably they've seen 400 to 500 patients through November. Our projected number of petitions for this year was 1,500, and so 1,053 is quite a bit under our projection without Mobile Crisis. So, they've done a good job in diverting patients from holds and those collateral costs.
Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott, for coming.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills as listed. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports, the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department report for November 2013, and the Minnehaha County Human Services report for November 2013. They have been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine personnel actions.
We'll move those actions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Before you approve those, we have two individuals who are unable to make it to last year's or last week's meeting, and I'd like to invite Tom to introduce his two staff members who are celebrating 20 years of service.
We have two of our employees that have been here for 20 years. It's Roger Stansel and John Crittenden.
Thank you, Roger and John. We appreciate your service in keeping our community safe this time of year, and for all the hard work you do during the rest of the year. So, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Any other questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to authorize the chairman to sign a contract with Segal Consulting for a Minnehaha County compensation study. Carrie Deaver?
For the past six weeks, the committee has been reviewing the responses that we've received to the RFP for the compensation study. After, I'd probably say, what, maybe about six weeks of deliberation and interviews, phone interviews, and then our onsite interviews, the committee is recommending the commission consider hiring Segal Consulting to perform that compensation study. I'm going to tell you upfront that they were the highest cost bid that we received. The reason we think that they're the best consultant to go with is they had a very strong proposal, they're able to complete the project within the three-month timeframe that we were hopeful that they could do it within, extensive government experience, they have experience looking at multiple options for compensating employees, including pay-for-performance, very, very comprehensive final report option. But one of the reasons we feel that they're worth that extra cost is because it comes with a database so that we can conduct the study and review market in the future on our own without hiring a consultant. Not that it'll work forever, but it does have the potential to save us some future costs. So with that, we're recommending your approval of the contract that had been reviewed by Kirsten Kapmeier before you went out on leave, so that we can move forward with using Segal Consulting. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for Carrie?
Make a motion to have the chairman sign an agreement with Segal Consulting.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and I think as you well stated, it's not just the cost, the expense of having that database available to us is literally reducing the cost of the quote over a period of time, where the other companies who bid did not offer that alternative. So, this literally saves us money over the long range, so that's good. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item C is consider a motion to approve changes to the Minnehaha County drug and alcohol policy and to adopt the Drug and Alcohol Procedures Manual. Carrie Deaver?
Two weeks ago, I provided you with a briefing on changes to our drug and alcohol policy, which as you recall were minimal. The major changes here is that we've expanded that policy into a procedures manual, so that we can expand pre-employment drug testing for all safety-sensitive physicians, where right now we only do it for DOT physicians. That procedure manual outlines what we're going to do for all those pre-employment processes, as well as the random program that we'd like to implement in January, as well as how we would do testing for reasonable suspicion for any of our employees. So really, it's just there as a guideline to help us make sure that we're applying policies and procedures fairly consistently.
Questions for Carrie? Commissioner Kelly?
Carrie, I don't remember if I asked this when we set the, we talked about this once before, I think.
That's correct, yep.
Does this apply to the volunteers in the emergency management?
You did ask that question, and unfortunately, no, at this point in time, it's for part-time and full-time employees only. Volunteers aren't considered employees in Minnehaha County, so right now, that policy doesn't take it into consideration. You did ask us to look into that, though, and we will do so.
Do you think it'd be a good idea? They are driving emergency equipment with lights and sirens, and if there's an accident, we got a problem.
Yep.
I just wonder why that has been missing in the past.
As a government employer, there are certain restrictions that we have in place for us that limit how much drug and alcohol testing we can do of staff or a public employer. So, very honestly, I'm not sure if we're going to have the capability to do so or not, and that's something I'm happy to work with the State's Attorney's Office in looking into.
Could you look into it a little further and see if we have text for the ration? Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion and-
We do have a motion.
No, we do not.
We'll move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the changes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is application for abatement. Kyle Halsef.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Halsef, Director of Equalization. We bring before you this morning one request for abatement of taxes, and this is for the year 2012, from the Christian Reform Church, Record ID 21634. You may question why it was for 2012, in that we waited for approximately 18 months to get a signature on the abatement application. So I apologize for that. It is in the amount of $2,289.73.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the abatement.
Second.
Is there any one here from the church or not? Why did it take 18 months?
God works in mysterious ways.[736.12][736.12](laughing).
You know, I've heard of separating the church and state, but that's going a little far.[747.87][747.87](laughing). I think we'll move on. We have a motion and a second to approve the abatement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven are notices and requests. A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Minnehaha County Highway Project MC 50-300-118-1, a bridge and deck rehabilitation on 484th Avenue over Split Rock Creek, approximately 4.5 miles north and 2 miles east of South Dakota Highway 11 and I-90 interchange.
Good morning, Tom.
Tom Wilsley, again, Highway Department. This is a project that we let once before this year, and the bid was over 20% over the engineer's estimate, and we rejected that bid. The bid letting for this project is scheduled for January 8th. Any other questions?
Questions for Tom? Thank you for redoing that. Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to republish the bid. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item number eight are planning and zoning notices. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider zoning text amendment number 13-05 to allow the keeping of fowl in the rural residential district, Article 4 of the 2002 Revised Joint Zoning Ordinance for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls. Scott Anderson.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, Planning and Zoning Director. Today, I'm bringing a request to set a hearing date of January 28th, 2014. This would be before the joint city-county commission meetings, and shortly, to give you an explanation, we are, this is a request that came in from a citizen in the Split Rock Heights area on the east side of Sioux Falls. The request is to allow the keeping of fowl, which actually is chickens and ducks, and this would be limited to the rural residential zoning district, which if you're not familiar with that zoning district in the county, it is the larger lot sizes, so you would have minimum lot sizes of one acre, and the request would be to allow chickens, ducks, whatever, fowl, with a conditional use permit, so it would be reviewed by the planning commission, and the neighbors would be notified, there'd be public participation. So, the first, the first part of the ordinance amendment would be adding that conditional use to rural residential, the keeping of fowl. And then, secondly, there'd be a proposed new definition for what a fowl is, which specifically identifies chickens and the like, ducks and the like, and then larger-bodied birds like pheasants or quail or whatever, and the like. I'd be glad to answer any questions. This has gone to the planning commission. As I indicated, it was brought to the staff through a petitioner, so I have worked with that petitioner. We've worked closely, the departments worked closely with the State's Attorney and the State's Attorney's Office. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, but this would be setting the hearing date for the public hearing, January 28th.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone have any questions?
Was there any, was there any opposition at the planning commission?
No, there was no opposition, and I should indicate that we're allowing up to six of these fowl, so you don't get an unlimited amount, it would be six, and that was, it's similar. The city's already gone through this, if you recall, about a year ago, they adopted their chicken and whatnot in the city, and this tries to accommodate a similar use. And actually, it's probably going to work better for the county, because this, better for us, because it would go into a zoning district where you have an acre, so you should have plenty of room for five or six chickens to run around. And I have prepared the ordinance, the hearing notice, and the fact of adoption. I've submitted that to the auditor's office, so it's all ready to go.
Any other questions? If not, is there a motion to publish?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to publish a notice of hearing for January 28th. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
There are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
Anyone who would like to come forward and speak about something that is not on the agenda, we'd like to hear from them now. No one's coming forward, so we'll go to item 10.
Item 10 is a hearing to conduct drainage permit, to consider drainage permit application in the 13-75 submitted by Chris Heavy to conduct agricultural draining in the northwest quarter section 13, Township 104 North, Range 52 West. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Once again, Scott Anderson, representing the Planning and Zoning Department. Today, you have a drainage permit application request, 1375, as Cindy indicated, was submitted by Chris Heavy. The property's located in Buffalo Township in section 13, and I have a slide presentation. I'll just go over some of the facts with you before I go over the slides. This was, this item is coming to you as one of the downstream property owners. U.S. Fish and Wildlife would not sign the waiver request to do the agricultural tiling. I sent out hearing notices to all of the downstream property owners for at least a half-mile downstream, and there were four of them. I sent those notices out two weeks ago, as is required by our drainage ordinance. I have not heard anything from any of the affected property owners, and today is the day of the hearing. So I will show you the, I'm going to toggle back and forth between these two maps, so you get an idea of what's going on. The property in yellow is the subject property, and you can see that little dimple that looks like a smile. That's where the tiling is going to occur, and if you notice, it's going to cross the road, which is 456th Avenue. It's going to cross property owned by Clifford and Lori Gardner, and they have signed the downstream waiver. And then it crosses into property that is owned by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and it empties into this small unnamed lake, or a very large slough, whichever your preference is. But I did look on the U.S. topo maps, and it's not named. It's not a named lake, it's just a rather good-sized lake. The, the, the proposed tile outlet, outlets in one spot, which is in section 14, and the applicant did provide the wetland determinations, and it has been determined that this is a prior converted wetland for crops, so I'll go back again, we'll toggle back. You can see the area that is wet, and the applicant wants to tile that. Here's again where the direction of the tile is going to go, and I'll show you some pictures. This is the tile looking back to the sort of east, southeast. You can see the little blue flags. I, they were out there. I assume that sort of follows where the proposed tile line's going to go. This is the field, part of the field that's going to be tiled. This shows you sort of the lake that it empties into. You can see it's a wildlife area, it was posted. It's a rather good-sized, a small lake, a good-sized slough. This shows, once again, the areas, it sort of slopes off to the northwest, and once again, you can see that wet area. You can see, if you look closely, some more blue flags, and those are the pictures, the crops were out. It's not a large area that's being tiled. Our recommendation, I'll get back to the slide. Our recommendation is that the proposed tile line is going to be in an area, a wet area, that has, and functions as part of all of the same watershed, and staff is recommending that the drainage board, that the drainage board approves drainage permit 1375. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have, and the applicant, Mr. Heavy is here, if you have questions for him.
Commissioner Barth?
Scott, how does it go under the highway there, under the road? I mean-
They'll put in, they'll put in a tile.
A solid pipe or a pitted pipe or?
I assume a solid pipe, but you may want to ask the applicant that, and he'll have to work with the township to get that approval.
Any other questions for Scott? Chris, would you like to come forward and say anything, or?
Yes, I can.
You'll need to identify yourself and give us your address, please.
Chris Heavy, 24555, 466th Avenue, Colton, South Dakota. One thing that I would like to point out, that the outlet, there is an existing tile there that runs from my property west through Gardner's property and does outlet now at the game fish and parks land. It just isn't working. I want to add to it, and it's not working. So that part, the actual, there is a tile that does run in there. One thing, the blue flags that he referenced, they were, I tore some trees down there, that was a one call, that had nothing to do with the tiling, so that was just the water mine mark.
Name for the story.[1407.62][1407.62](laughing). Thank you, Chris. Anyone else have any questions for Chris? Doesn't appear so. Because this is a public hearing, is there anyone who is in opposition to the application? I don't see anyone moving forward. Is there a motion from the commission?
Move to approve the drainage permit.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the drainage permit application 13-75. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Good luck.
Item number 11 is consider a motion to approve a final change order in the amount of a negative $7,118.11 to the contract for project MC 50-150-202-2, bridge superstructure replacement on Minnehaha County Highway 139, the T Ellis Road. Tom Wilsley.
Yes, this is to adjust our final as-built quantities on the project. All the items that are listed here were field-measured or added or deleted as needed for the construction. The construction was handled by HDR, and they did a very good job for us.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Tom? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjust the contract by $7,118.11 reduction. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item number 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign a professional services agreement for final design services with JSA Engineering and Land Surveyors in the amount of $14,968 to replace bridge structures 50-290-131 and 50-290-135 located on 483rd Avenue north of Brandon. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shannon Schultz, Minnehaha County Highway Department, Senior Project Engineer. The item before you is requests to go forward with final design on one of the two bridges. These bridges are in very close proximity to each other, they're both relatively posted at the same reduction. However, through the TSNL process, type, size, and location study, and that's why we do these, we determined that the replacement of the northern structure, which is structure number 295-131, this is the north structure over Split Rock, the cost to replace that would be $500,000. And because of its context, and basically a very, very low volume of traffic, probably on the order of 40, and probably 35 of those happen on Sunday when they use that route for church, so the route is very little used, there's no adjacent residences, there's pasture and cropland on both sides, so it's really just a gravel road out in the country, not serving any residences. So, it's our recommendation and our also preferred plan to not address 295-131 at this time, we will just continue to let that use out for remaining service life. The second structure, which is the one we're requesting approval to go forward with final design, is a tributary to Split Rock Creek, also known as structure 50-29-135. It is south of the exist, of the structure I just mentioned, and again, due to the context, we're proposing to not replace it with a full-blown bridge, we're going to probably go forward with a low-water crossing, which is exactly how it functions now. The bridge is located slightly south of the existing low-water crossing, which is just a sag in the road, when the upstream waters flood, they cross the road at that sag, and that's how that particular creek migrates downstream. So we're proposing to perpetuate that in a formal way, and add a slight cost savings to the county, you know, to build it with a full-blown bridge would cost somewhere around $350,000, but with our proposed three, 36-inch round concrete pipes costing around $125,000. That would also include some concrete road where the water crossing is. And I guess we're kind of doing this as a consolation with the township, we don't want to make, every time it's going to, you know, cross the road, we don't want them to have to go out and repair that road as it washes out, which is what they have to do now. So that's what we're proposing.
Thank you, Shannon. Does anyone have any questions for Shannon? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just the way it's listed on our agenda, I think that we'll need to change the motion because it says replace bridge structures, and it's got the two numbers, and we won't be replacing that 131, and also won't be replacing the bridge 135, we'll be changing that to a low-water crossing. So I think we need to make sure that when we make the motion, we correct our, what's listed on our agenda.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
I can make that as a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Jeff has a-
Commissioner Heiburger?
Shannon, on the, on the existing bridge, is there a railing and stuff, and when we replace it with these culverts?
There's some railing, I wouldn't lean against it. The bridge on the south side is built in 1937, so the railing is really more of a facade. And the northern structure does have some standard railing. Tom might know, Tom left. I don't have a picture of that bridge in my mind. It's a larger structure, so there is going to be more function on the north bridge because it is a major tributary. Tom, do you know if the north structure has railing on it or not?
It has some.[1774.62][1774.62](laughing) They've come through with enough farm equipment to-
Tom, you might have to come to the mic, please.
There is some railing on both of these structures. There's been enough large farm equipment come through that it's been damaged severely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we have a motion- If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the professional service agreement. And it is not to replace the bridge, but to use the described low-flow culvert. Any other questions? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Shannon.
Item number 13 is consider a motion to supplement $7,411.8 to ASN 1564 instead of ASN 15691 in the state's attorney's budget to cover the cost of equipment to help in trial preparation. The original supplement was passed in June of 2013. Bob Litz?
Good morning, Commissioners. The request for this action came down from the state's attorney's office, and they apparently have found a more suitable ASN, and they're the ones making this request.
Anyone have any questions, Bob? If not, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Motion and a second to approve the change in the ASN for $7,411.88. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 14 is consider authorization for the following items related to the purchase of e-poll books. A is consider a resolution to declare Minnehaha County as a single voting precinct. B is to authorize the county chairman to purchase e-poll books with payment method decided by the county commission. And item C is to authorize the auditor, deputy state's attorney, and chairman to oversee contract preparation. Bob Litz?
Good morning again, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. While I realize that this is quite a large document that I've still got to go over because I think the public deserves to have the details of this here. And so I'm going to start here with my request here. The beginnings of new election cycle starts at the end of this year. Among the many preparations we will need to accomplish is preparation for the four elections we'll be involved with this year. First election that we'd be involved with will be the City of Sioux Falls Joint Municipal School Board on April 8, 2014. The second one will be the possible secondary municipal election on April 29. And our involvement as a county with this will be our usual absentee voting and counting of the ballots the night of that election. The county's actual election, the first one, will be the primary election on June 3, 2014, and the general election on November 4, 2014. Any, no, I'd like to just stop every now and then because this is a long document. Actually, if there's any questions that I can answer about the subject matter we just covered.
Any questions of Bob so far? Commissioner Barth?
Bob, what does it mean to be a single precinct?
A single precinct is, the way the state law leads right now, is in order for us to do the election centers where anybody can vote anywhere, the commission has to designate the whole county as a single precinct.
Any other questions? I'll just, I guess, input a little bit here. The e-poll books are not voting machines. They are registration. I've had that question before in this morning's conversation and some others, that they think that people are voting electronically. They are not voting electronically.
That's correct, Commissioner. Actually downstairs, you know, if you go in for absentee voting, we have a computer that we pull up your information on. And in a sense, it's a precursor to the e-poll books that we're asking, that I'm asking for today. First part here, the city and school elections 2014. Earlier this year, the city, school district, and the county agreed upon standardizing election locations. And I want to emphasize, this is within the city limits. The group settled on 13 locations, and the city had an ADA consultant that toured the sites with us to assure access was acceptable. We also considered parking lot access, entry to the building, and once inside a site, immediacy of the actual polling booths and tables and electrical outlets. Connectivity is not a problem at these locations. The city and the school district are doing the e-poll book and election center concepts going forward. The 13 sites work for the city elections, school elections, and would certainly work for a primary election. Are there any questions about that portion of my presentation?
Mr. Hybarger?
Did the City of Sioux Falls buy e-poll books?
No, they're, they can, what they would like to do is lease them from the county. And we've not agreed upon any terms yet because we don't know the total cost at this point. Secretary of State would also have some, should the commission decide not to go this route today. So they do have an option.
You talk about, excuse me. Does anyone else have any questions? Connectivity, who, did we internally do that, or was that done by outside agencies to make sure they were connected?
Well, the buildings that are there, by and large, were already involved with e-poll book elections. There's a couple of new ones there, and I guess I would have to have the city and Bev, you know, Bev from the school district, she's here today for any questions you might have. And Lori was busy, but she wanted to be here but could not do that. The connectivity in the city is pretty much a given. You might have a space within a building that you could have trouble at, but the MiFi card that you have can be moved, and Monty might correct me on this, but I believe the distance is 30 feet away from the e-poll book, is to put it in a window or a door space to improve that connectivity. And I would have, I would tell you more about that further in my presentation, Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you.
County elections 2014. The county elections would also need 12 additional sites for up-county voting with e-poll book vote center concept in both the general and primary elections. And by, what I mean by up-county is if you look at any map, north is up, and generally it's the northern-flung voting locations that I'm talking about. And basically, for those locations, what I think, what I feel is that if we keep those locations that we've used as precincts, we standardize the locations, and nobody has to change up their driving distances. Because I think out in the county, it turns into a driving, it turns into geography and how many miles you drive. And if we don't interrupt that cycle, I don't think anybody's going to be upset about it. And I think that the access is fairly spread out throughout the county if we use the old precincts as election centers. All the former precincts out in the county would be active. The county may add some more sites inside the city for the general election. We want to review after the city-school election returns to get a clearer picture of turnouts and where additional city sites might be desirable. The monitoring of the city-school election and our primary would hopefully reveal any improvements that we would desire as we progress. Now, by checking them out, what I would be looking for is the intensity of the voter turnout at a location. And let's say Memorial School just got some really great numbers for voter turnout during the school election, I may consider having another election center that's close by to take some of the overflow or some of the pressure off of that location. The other thing that the city helped out with before, that I was gathering some information, was the last time, I think it was for the event center election, what we did was we monitored the street traffic at certain times at certain locations. Because it is my firm belief that if we're dumping a bunch of more traffic on a school location, when the kids are getting out and people are going home from work, I don't think we're doing anybody a service. So I would be mindful of that situation coming up during the election as well. And we would try to mitigate any of those types of situations during the general election where, of course, the turnout is much larger. Is there any questions on that portion? Very good. Counties with or considering e-poll book election centers, and following counties have made the change to e-poll books and election centers so far, Hyde, Potter, Sully, and Yankton County. And the following counties are pursuing e-poll book election centers for their next election cycle. Hughes County, Brookings County, and they did their last election with e-poll books. Brown County, Davison County, Cottington County, and Pennington County. She has the e-poll books in her possession. However, I would tell you that due to geography, she is going to use the e-poll books but not the election center concept. She's still going to stay with the precincts. Because she has, she can drive up to 100 miles. And so her concern was if they had ballots that they had to take out there and getting them there in time. Now, that said, the e-poll books do have a ballot counting feature. So you can, as the ballots go out, you can find out how many of the certain ballots you have left at a certain time. Are there any questions about any of the other counties?
Commissioner Hybarger?
Just a point to make that I think you just made was that at each voting center, they will have to have every ballot for every area of the county.
That is correct. And, you know, I've investigated that, and 115% of the registered voter seems to be the sweet spot for this type of an election. So last time I made 100% of the ballots, we had some left over, but the people who've done this before advise going to 115%. So if I take those numbers from the last election, that would be about an extra $1,200 in ballots.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Bob, have they done this system in other states with larger populations? I mean, certainly, you know, I went down and watched them in Yankton use this, and I was, it looked pretty good to me. But they are only one legislative district. So, you know, have they used them in Cook County or in Hennepin County or?
The ones that Hart talked to me about were down in Texas and Colorado. And the one place in Texas where I believe it's around Galveston has 215 precincts, and they rolled those out. They also, that was one of the people that was giving me a number for a reference. I called them up, and they really liked the poll books and had minimal trouble with them. And that, 215 precincts. Last time, for comparison purposes, Minnehaha County, we had 71 precincts.
Other questions at this point?
Yeah, I'd like to move on to connectivity. Last summer, the auditor's office conducted connectivity testing in the county rural precincts. Early this spring, we planned to reexamine the sites of the old precincts to make sure we have connectivity going forward. And when I went out into town to the precinct places, I was a little bit ignorant. I took the MiFi card and I went out there, and some of the places, like Colton comes to, come to my mind, they have a large metal building that they do their elections in. And I was inside the metal building about 30 feet away from, 40 feet away from the door where they actually have the table for voting. I did not know at that time, you could move that MiFi up to the window or the door to get better connectivity. Some of my places out there had excellent connectivity, and then other ones had questionable connectivity because of this situation. Concerns have been aired about field techs available for the initial deployment of e-poll books. We will have representatives of the secretary of state's office available to us. The vendor of the e-poll books, Hart Inter-Civic, will be in the state and have representatives available. Election school that I will be putting on will have an additional segment on e-poll books twice this year, once for the primary and again for the general election. The e-poll book will be set up in those classes. The potential for help from the SETI computer classes is being explored. The election center superintendents will be required to set up and test the day before the election. And that's real, most of them did that anyway. But I'm hoping that that will reveal 99% of any problems that we might have the night before. I have also two troubleshooters, Marty DeWitt and Joe Morrison, that are experienced in elections and know all the precincts. They're also tech savvy. I also have an ex-employee from the secretary of state's office, Andrew Petrus, who will be assisting Minnehaha County this election cycle. And he was present for the first e-poll book rollouts in the state and is currently employed by the city of Harrisburg. The Responsibility Division of Tasks, as was agreed upon, and that is attached, it's on the back with the other documents, the letters from the city and the school. I could also contract with an outside provider to help with the MiFi Verizon piece. The e-poll books keep track of the styles and quantity of ballots at location, and there is a connectivity indicator light showing on the e-poll books. Also, since I did this document, Monty and I had a few conversations about this here. And of course, the IT department is really busy, and his ability to loan me some of his people anytime during this election is curtailed. And so to that end, I've contacted two providers in town here. One of them would be Elbow Computing, and I talked with Kevin Elsing, E-L-S-I-N-G. They're very interested in it. And then another person that I contacted was On-Site Technical Service, and that's Todd Born, and he also is interested in exploring this possibility. Can I answer anything about connectivity segment in my presentation at this point?
Commissioner Hybarger?
So you're talking contracting outside IT workers to do the loading of all the e-poll books before and after?
No, the loading of the e-poll books will be between Hart Inter-Civic, who is the vendor of the e-poll books in the secretary of state's office.
So who, what would you be using outside IT support?
You know, the day of, like I said, I'll send my superintendents out and they'll set up the day before. And if we have any issues right then, we're hoping that the red lights all come on and show connectivity. And if there's not, then we send somebody out. And then the day of the election, if we have any technical problems that day, we'll have people on standby that are experienced in onsite or remote monitoring or actually going to the place. Now, I would tell you this, that all the details of that aren't worked out. And the reason for that is I really don't know after the school election how many more precincts I'm going to have. So the numbers are a little bit iffy. But as we go farther down my contract, or in my presentation, you'll find out that I've got, I'm asking that Gerald Benega, Kirsten Katmeyer, or perhaps whoever's sitting in that chair and myself, move forward with the details on these as they reveal themselves. There are some things that are unknowable today, in spite of the best research I can do.
How many, Bob, how many people do the two contractors that you mentioned have on staff to be able to do this? Because one of those individuals I know is a single person with other functions, so...
Todd is, but he mentioned that he could contract with us up to five extra people that day. And Elbow Computing indicated they had three people.
Okay.
Okay, security concerns. There were security concerns about the e-poll books, and I believe they've been nullified. There are no security breaches that could affect the county IT system from the use of e-poll books. They're singular purpose and unable to connect to the internet by users. Voter registration is downloaded by the state. That information would be the same whether it's on paper voter, or whether it's on a paper voter registration book or an electronic poll book. Any questions about security concerns?
Commissioner Barth?
So having outside contractors work basically on the brains of our voter registration list is not, is not a concern?
I don't believe it is. Because we would be looking at the mechanical aspects of plugging things in, getting it running. They're not going to be involved with the downloading of that information.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little bit teasing on this, but I remember in the last election that one of Mitt Romney's sons is an investor and Hart Interactive on this. And, you know, I mean, people just think, you know, is there, is there a concern here somewhere where there could be a problem?
Well, you know, Commissioner, to that end, I would say there's a lot of people's investments and a lot of companies all over the United States. You're never going to get away from that perception of conflict of interest. I mean, that's, that's just about impossible in today's world.
Other questions at this point?
May I move on?
Sure.
Very good. Hava funds and costs. The cost of the e-poll book kit is approximately $2,000 per unit. It is determined that 100 of the e-poll books are needed for Minnehaha County. That is just under $200,000 plus an annual licensing fee of $6,000. The purchase could be covered by Hava funds, which we, today we have $660,748.64. The purchase would still leave enough for the ballot tabulation machines scheduled for, that we've talked about in 2018. A contract for the county person, county's purchase would need to be drawn up by the state's attorney's office. The city and the county would like to lease our e-poll books. That cost to be determined in revisions to the city and school election agreements are still pending. Any questions about Hava?
If we don't spend the money, does that roll over, so to speak? Do we get to keep that Hava fund reserved for Minnehaha County to the future?
Absolutely, Commissioner. And, you know, we even get a little bit of interest on it here now. You know, in days gone by, Sue did pretty good. She would get $30,000, $35,000 worth of interest on here, and it was enough to pay for segments of the election, which was real nice. But as we all know, the investing climate is not that today.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk about the three viable options of paying for the machines.
Bob, just a question. The county would purchase the books, and the city and the county would like to lease our books. The city and school district?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have typo in there, I guess. There are three viable options of paying for the machines. Number one would be to draw the funds out of the general fund, and the county pays directly to the vendor. Number two would be to draw the funds from the general fund and submit application for reimbursement from the Hava funds that the county has and are administered by the state. Third option would be have the secretary of state purchase the machines with state Hava funds and reimburse the state with county Hava funds. In the past, there were two times per year a county could apply for reimbursement for Hava funds. The change in administrative rules changed the timeframe from that to any time during the year. It usually takes about four weeks from application to disbursement. The Division of Responsibilities worksheet shows the breakdown of deployment roles. There are letters of support from the school district and the City of Sioux Falls election officials. The common use of e-poll books and election centers will simplify the voter experience and cause less confusion because of uniformity. Questions about methods of payment?
Commissioner Hybarger?
The Hava funds, we're also planning on using those funds for future tabulation machine replacement, correct?
That's correct. And, you know, with us buying a hundred of them, two hundred, and then two hundred, assuming that it's two hundred or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'd still have Hava fund money left over after buying the e-poll books and the tabulation machines.
Did you say, did you say earlier that if the county didn't buy them, that the city could rent them from the state?
That, you know, and I, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the state, but that has been the pattern of what's happened before. There's a precedent on that.
One more question.
Sure.
Would the state rent them to us?
That's something I did not explore, and I believe they have enough of them at the current time.
Other questions? Commissioner Pekus?
Why do we have to go to one precinct?
That is something the Secretary of State has determined in statute we have to do in order to conduct the election centers, go from a bunch of precincts to one precinct. And, Mr. Pekus, as you well know, I'm no attorney, but I imagine there's a good reason for it.
I have no idea.
Well, you know, to that end, you know, every, at the end of every census, you commissioners redefine what the precincts are.
Right.
And so I think it's along the lines of that thought, that if we're gonna change something to do with the precincts, that the commission has to do that. We're going from many precincts to one precinct.
One big precinct.
One big precinct, the whole county would become a precinct.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm sorry.
If I lived in Sioux Falls, I could go all the way up to Colton and vote in the Sioux Falls election.
That's correct.
Commissioner Kelly?
So what's the bad part of going to a single precinct? There must be some negatives to that. None?
Well, I don't know. I don't know there is.
Well, we, I think we need to know, we need to know, you know, other factors.
Well, you know, you're assuming there is something bad about it, and I'm not certain there is.
No, I'm not assuming that, I'm just saying that is there any, is there any fallout? You said you didn't know.
You know, one thing that did come to my attention the other day with Bev, and we were having some conversations, and one of her precincts, her, one of her election centers opened up fifteen minutes late, and they all had to because of the way the state law was, so they all stayed open fifteen minutes after the election was over, because they are a single precinct. Now, she would like some changes in the state statute, approach the Secretary of State about that, he feels that that is not the answer, and I don't know what he's got in mind, but that was one, one thing that could be a possibility.
Commissioner Hybarger?
What if we have an issue with connectivity at one of our precincts in the rural county, and then you've got people standing there, or they can't vote there for two hours as a, as a connectivity is downed, is that a check, that, does that affect when that particular precinct closes at the end of the election?
Yes.
So connectivity is a huge factor in this whole entire process.
That's correct. And so, you know, to that end, we go do the MiFi checks to make sure we have connectivity to begin with, and then the night before, when the election superintendent's set up, we check the connectivity, and then the morning of the election, we check the connectivity.
You ever heard of Murphy?
Oh, I know him well.
But even in the county building, we at times have, all of our computer systems will go down for a period of time, so their connectivity could just, like you said, Murphy's Law, go down.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, when I was down observing in Yankton, there was one precinct, one precinct, one voting location that opened late because the sheriff's deputies who were transporting the machines out there stopped for a doughnut someplace on the way, and didn't have the urgency to get those machines out there. That said, apparently it was also a cafe of some kind where that was at, and they gave free food to the voters who were waiting to vote, it was kind of a nice deal that way. But there, certainly there, there was a glitch, I mean, potentially you'd have a blizzard going on, and trying to deliver those machines could be challenging.
Commissioner Kelly?
Back on the single precinct, will the whole Minnehaha County be precinct one-one then, is that, and there won't be a three-five or a?
That's correct.
Well, that's, that's one of the questions I've got, because our legislative districts follow our precincts, so are we going to differentiate between the different legislative districts?
That has to do with who gets what ballot, and the, the e-poll book will read that out, you'll get a little receipt that will give the ballot number, and you'll sign that receipt instead of the, the poll book, and the election worker will hand you the correct ballot.
How do the, how does the public find out who they're voting for?
Well, I would, I would just have to tell you the same way.
Read yard signs?
They always, yeah, well, yes, yes, the legislative districts, yes.
Because right now, if you go to the paper, you can see where your district is, and you're gonna be able to know which district you're in.
We can still break out the legislative districts easily.
Well, I, I'm not concerned about that, when I, my concern is, we can do that here, we're in the know, we're on the inside, I'm asking about Jack Public, how do they find it out?
Well, last year, I, I did, you know, the Argus Leader, of course, publishes that information on a regular basis, the county website, I believe, had that information. I also did something that my predecessor didn't do, and it's kind of a gamble, but I spent twelve or fifteen hundred dollars putting that map in the shopping malls, and I don't know how to gauge the response or, for something, you know, how effective that advertising is, but we would certainly reach out, as we have in the previous elections, to get that information out to the public.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Were you here the last time we did the election center? Were you, were you the auditor at the time?
Yes, I was, yes. And, and to that end, what I did was I had five places that we tried out, and Hart Inter-Civic came up here with three people, and, and we just tested those five, and we still, we just simply didn't have any trouble. Of course, in fairness to that, I had three Hart people here in, in five locations, so we were, we were a bit quick to cover any trouble.
I'm, I'm sorry, Bob, you're talking about using the e-poll books, correct?
Yes.
See, I'm talking about when we use large election centers. Were you here when we did that, for, I think it was for the school board?
Well, I think, I think we, they, the city did it for the election center, I mean, the event center, and I think the school's done it twice now, and, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna speak on behalf of Bev here, you know, but I think the school's done it twice now. Once with ESNS and another time for, for, with Hart.
Bev, do you wanna address it? Either that or she's sending me signals that aren't appropriate.
We did, we did our 2011 school district election, that was the pilot for the state, and that was done with the ten election centers.
Yeah.
And then 2011, or 2012, we did it with the city, and we had thirteen election centers for that, and we are planning to do it again in April. In 2013, we did it for the school board election, and we had the thirteen agreed-upon election centers that the city and the county and the school district agreed upon.
Okay.
So we've done it three times.
John?
Bev, do you recall the first time we did this, that there seemed to be some confusion on where people were going to vote?
There was, we put maps up at all the unused polling sites, we put posters on the doors that voters normally come in to let them know the sites that they could go vote at.
Do you think that, in your opinion, and I'll ask Bob this too, do you think, in your opinion, that for a primary and for a general election, that the people of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County are ready to go for these election centers as opposed to the precincts?
I will tell you this, we surveyed, for two elections, we surveyed the voters who voted, and eighty-two percent of them loved it.
All right. Thank you, Bev. Any other questions? Commissioner Hybarger?
Mr. Bob, if there's a recount in one area, you have to do the whole entire precinct, so you have to do the whole city in order to do, or city, whole county in order to do a recount on anything.
Yes, that is, that is one of them.
So that's a big deal. That's time.
Well...
That's a lot of time.
I think...
The question first.
Have this, has this single precinct thing ever been discussed before us before? Is this the first time we're hearing about it?
I don't believe so, I think it's been mentioned, but maybe in the newness of everything else, it was, it was overlooked or minimized, I don't know.
Well, okay, and for instance, I'd ask a question, both the Democratic and Republican Parties have precinct committee men and committee women. Is there only gonna be two from each party?
Hmm, that's a good question.
I don't know if we've done the research on this.
It'll make the convention a lot easier.
Yeah.
Commissioner Barth?
Um, to John's point about how do people know where to vote, I mean, or who to vote for, certainly in District fourteen, you know, where we have candidates Deb Soholt, Mark Feinstein, and Anne Hayek, they're gonna have to have their signs up in Dell Rapids, just like we county commissioners do, just like Dennis Dugard has to, if that's the way that people figure out who their candidates are. And it would be incumbent on those voters to, and if we do have just one precinct, I can still be chairman of the county Democrats.
You'd also be a precinct committeeman, yeah.
I, I could tell you that the Republican Party is very active in filling those slots, and the Democrat Party has...
No, but my question is, if you don't have precincts, how do you have precinct committee people?
I don't know.
I mean, I'll be a resident of, I don't know, I think I'm three-five. Now I'll be a resident of one-one.
No, I, how did they, how did they approach, you know, you've talked to the Secretary of State, how does Secretary Gant approach the issue of gerrymandering and other issues that one precinct would, you know, now, now we're gonna say from Thirty-third to Eighty-Fifth Street's gonna be District fourteen. I mean, instead of being precinct two-one, two-five, thirteen-five, I, I guess, I guess the concern I have is, how do you get that information out to the public?
Well, the legislative districts will not change, that's, they'll, they'll be the ones that we decided, you know, that you approved and knew after the census in, in 2010. You know, there has been, in the past, from what I've seen, that Sioux has divided those precincts, but, you know, due to growth and stuff, but I don't, they were still within that legislative district. The legislative districts will stay the same.
Okay, so the, the voting precincts are now being divorced from our legislative districts, and the precincts...
You brought up that point, and when you talk about census, how's that gonna affect the district, the legislative districts, if you got one precinct?
The legis, that has to do with where you live, and you will be given that ballot for that person that's peculiar to that legislative district.
But it has no effect on the census?
On the census, I, I don't understand the question.
Well, some of the distribution of dollars is based on where the population is.
I, I guess I don't understand that question in relation to...
I think I understand your question, you are, when the census comes out and they're trying to figure out the size of particular legislative districts or...
Right.
...redrawn the boundaries, I think they do take a look at those existing precincts and where the population numbers are in order to adjust those legislative districts during the census, I think that's the question that you're getting at.
You know, you know, to that end, you know, you were what, District thirteen?
Mm-hmm.
You know, District thirteen forever stopped at Fifty-seventh Street, and now it goes all the way down to Eighty-Fifth Street, or whatever it is, way down to Lake County, it goes way south. So, you know, you have to be pretty much looking at those maps, or at least trying to figure out where your area is if you want to vote in an election, and I think it's, you know, the state's really gonna have to pick up the ball and be really proactive on getting that information out. Because at this point, I had a tough time in the last election trying to figure out where the district stops and where, which, where the maps are, because quite honestly, their maps are atrocious. It's like reading a tourism map. And, you know, I'm, you know, that, that's just a concern I have.
And to that, to that end, Commissioner, that was one of the first duties I had when I, I became the auditor here, was these, the legislative districts that were drawn...
Yeah.
They were drawn, they were, they were, there was a paragraph full of numbers, and we had to interpret that and figure out where the, where the street splits were, and put that on a map in Sioux Falls, and that was one of the first things that I did. And there was actually a couple of little blurbs in there that we worked with to get it kinda like you call gerrymandering, these strange little shapes where they reach down to catch a pocket of people and, you know, population-wise, the numbers are supposed to drive it.
Right.
And, and, you know, those, those things, every ten years, they will shift anyway. And then we also remember that we're Minnehaha County, and, and part of those legislative districts may go into Lincoln County, but that's Lincoln County's affair down there. And so we, we just, you know, the, I guess, you know, it's always been an issue as to where some people vote, you know, the precincts and...
Yeah, you just opened up another can of worms, because now we got, we got District thirteen, and that goes into Lincoln County, and that, they're still having the precincts down there, but we'll be one precinct up here. So how are you gonna be able, if you have to have a recount up here, to be able to differentiate between just the votes from District thirteen and the precincts down in Lincoln County that are gonna be counted? Because they're not one, are they?
No, they're not.
Okay. Well, and if I may...
Sure.
You know, if I lived in District thirteen, Lincoln County, and I wanted to vote in Hartford, I'm shocked I can't vote, because I'm from Lincoln County, but everyone else in District thirteen or whatever thinks that they can. I do think that this plan has some promise, at the same time, I think there are a lot of issues.
Commissioner Kelly?
The devil's in the detail, obviously, but it begs another question, which John started, Lincoln County's still gonna be precincts. We can only affect things to Fifty-seventh Street, and yet, the, the people out there are gonna have a whole, when you got a crossover, crossover district like thirteen or the one out west, which goes down to T in that area, to me, it really confuses the whole issue.
But you've always had that Fifty-seventh Street division line for license plates, property taxes, and everything else, I, I...
Right. But for the city election, there'll be, in the school district, there'll be one election center. But when it comes to a general election, they'll still be going back to precincts or primary, they'll go back to precincts, at least in Lincoln County.
And if you combine city and, if you, if the city has an issue on the general election ballot, and we got an issue also, or in the primary, you got two different kinds of system.
Well, if you're, if you're from Lincoln County, you simply won't show up in our poll books, so you can't vote at our location, we'll send you back down to Lincoln County, and that's a common occurrence today.
You know, see, that's, that's what I'm talking about, Bob, I got a problem with, with sending mixed messages out there. You know, we don't wanna create hurdles to people voting, I think, I think the goal here is to get everybody voting and to make it easier. And I remember when we did the, when we did the election centers last time, we had calls from people that were really upset with the fact that they showed up at their normal place to vote, and it was closed. And they got confused as to where they were supposed to go, and, you know, I...
Let me, let me say that the county's never done the election center thing, what we did is we put five poll books out in precincts just to see how they worked, and they worked great.
No, no, we, we got some heat with a general election where, or not a general election, but using the election centers where, I believe we got calls into our auditor's office, they were very upset because there was some confusion related to that.
But that was not our election, is that correct? That was the schools' or the, or the city's election?
You're missing the point. We had voters that were upset because they couldn't find the place they needed to vote. So now, you're saying it's not our responsibility. You're right, but does the voter care? They're just getting the runaround. How many times do you have to sit on the phone and go through the, the call system and get to the end, and you find out that there's nobody at the end of the line? I don't wanna create problems with the election process, we just need to keep it simple. But that, that's just me, I'm just, these are really good questions, I'd like to know the answers to them.
Mr. Barth?
To John's point again, and John is on top of things today, I, just to look at...
As opposed to last week.
Wake up, John, thank you. We've gone from, you know, the idea of going from seventy to twenty-five polling locations. I, I like the poll books, I wish that we had seventy locations with poll books, because that's where the people are going to go. And these smaller elections, we certainly have, you know, significant turnout, but it's not like a county-wide election with a hundred thousand registered voters. You know, in, in other states, I've heard of people waiting seven hours in line to, to cast their ballot, I don't want them to wait more than five minutes. And I think that's how it worked out in Yankton there with, with their smaller district, et cetera. I, I would rather us go to keeping the same seventy precincts, putting the equipment in there for instant, there's no way to vote twice with this technology, and it's, it's got some wonderful characteristics, but, you know, trying to trick old people into not voting at all, you know, we don't wanna disenfranchise... into not voting at all, you know, we don't wanna disenfranchise people who honestly want to vote, just because they moved their polling place, you know, from the mall to Wall Lake. And anyway, I have a concern about that, Bob. I like the idea of going to this, but I'm not ready to try it in a big, big election.
Well, you know, to that end, I did propose something to this commission a while back, and I don't know if you recall it, but doing exactly that is rolling it out, keeping the old precincts, all 71 of them, but introducing the poll books. And I think that might be a, a good fail-safe thing. The other thing is that I would tell you is that we are still dependent on those e-poll books in those precincts now. Like Cindy pointed out, if I had to have a recount, it'd be a smaller recount.
That's right.
But, like I say, I think that'd work, and if that would be a step in the right direction, why, I would certainly be willing to work very hard to facilitate that concept.
Commissioner Heiberg?
Even with 70, there's still the concern of connectivity.
Right, but you're breaking it down into some very small chunks.
We've hit this connectivity issue multiple times.
Monty, you're here, would you come forward, I think with some of us have questions about that, because the last thing we wanna do is make a mess out of this.
Good morning, Commissioners.
And it's becoming more and more confusing as we sit here.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wadimbach, Minnehaha County Information Technology Director. Regarding the connectivity issues, you know, I think, you know, there probably would be more concern in those rural areas than in town. You know, and as far as the connectivity goes, my understanding with this system is they would still be able to vote, but if the system's not able to communicate up with the central server, it would have lost its ability to know if you voted more than one place. So you'd wanna get that resolved as quickly as possible. But I, I think there's still some question on some of those rural areas as far as the connectivity goes. I think, I think it would be good to get out to some of those and do some, some testing to make sure we have good connectivity at those locations.
So have you been out to those rural areas to check connectivity?
The Information Technology Department has not been out there.
Okay.
Bob went on his own to do that connectivity testing, and we've talked that it would be good to have one of my technicians go to those different locations and, and do testing so we have, you know, good confidence that, that we have connectivity, specifically the rural areas.
Commissioner Kelly?
I know Monty's got some other questions, are we gonna address them at this point, or are we gonna bring him back?
I, I can address them now, as far as, you know, supporting the fleet of laptops. You know, and the proposal here, you know, is a request for 100, but I've also heard numbers of potentially 150 and 200 with... I have talked to my staff, I have a small staff that would be able, that, you know, is responsible for supporting computers and laptops. That's a large fleet of laptops to, you know, prepare and get ready, depending on what, you know, software updates that the computer may need, just going and getting all of those laptops, turning them on, performing any changes or whatnot, putting them back into the cases, back into whatever storage they came from. It's man-hours. So I talked to Bob that I, I don't have the staff to maintain that fleet of laptops without neglecting other stuff, and I just don't feel that we could do it properly. So I think that's where he's kinda looked at some outside resources, you know, for, for the support of those. It's work to support Windows laptops.
Follow-up, so basically you're saying you will not support this, you would not from IT department support this request?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, yeah, we don't have the proper resources to manage this additional fleet of 100 to potentially 200 laptops without neglecting other county requirements.
What promise do we have from Windows not to roll out any updates or anything the night before a general election?
Valid question. So, you know, I think whoever would be managing...
They have a customer support hotline, your call is very important.
Whoever would be managing this fleet of laptops would have to configure those laptops so that they did not automatically get Windows updates, because you wouldn't want those Windows updates. And for the most part, you know, they're, they're in a box sitting in storage somewhere.
Right.
So for every election, you know, if you decided you wanna put those Windows updates, and if we manage the fleet of laptops, we would put those Windows updates as a, you know, precautionary measure to make sure that it's got all the proper Windows.
On the security.
You know, we would either have to reimage those for every election or something. There was some discussion about the laptops not having Internet Explorer on them, and that would reduce the risk greatly. If you don't have users going out, you know, and getting on the Internet, that reduces your security footprint greatly. But, but I'll just restate, if county IT department was managing a fleet of laptops, we would want, you know, all the proper Windows updates to be on there. And those come out every second Tuesday of every month, there's a new group of...
Tuesday.
That's Tuesday. Commissioner Heiberg has been patient, so go ahead.
With laptops, and you just said 150 to maybe 200, we have ongoing maintenance, we have ongoing replacement. These are also laptops that are gonna sit in a box most of the time during the year, and you look at the expense of sitting a laptop in a box that's gonna be used four or five times a year. And like I said, ongoing maintenance and replacements as they outdate and sit there, it seems like kind of a waste of funds that you're spending that much money on 150 laptops that are gonna sit in a box.
Yeah, I mean, they're, you know, for this purpose only, and, yeah, I, I think that, you know, the, the equipment probably wouldn't wear out, but as we all know, technology evolves.
Advances.
So, you know, in five years, you'd probably say, gosh, this is, you know, the old model. We want the new model, whether or not it's torn out is irrelevant. The new model that comes out is gonna have something better. Heart Interseptic's already on their, their second, you know, device since, you know, if you were looking at them last year, so...
Commissioner Kelly, do you have a question?
Well, yeah, I don't think you can answer, but with $250,000 worth of computers, or whatever it's gonna be, we'd need a fiscal note on this, and I don't imagine you can calculate what the costs are gonna be, annual cost ongoing with this thing. The more you talk, the more involved your department becomes with this thing. I assume that it'll be significant, just the re, well, the reprogram or whatever you do it before the election cycles, and, and whatever else you gotta do. Just today, I think it looks like all of us have had some problems with our iPads.
That was Murphy's Law.
I mean, it's a good example of what, I mean, if this happened at an election, we got a real major problem, because you could have three people there trying to get us straightened out on this thing, and nobody anticipated it before the meeting. So I guess, I'm asking, am I right in saying there's probably gonna be significant costs, annual cost of maintaining this whole system? And I don't believe that comes out of our funds.
Yeah, I think Murphy's Law did come here this morning, everything working. Yeah, as far as, you know, cost supporting these devices, yeah, there definitely would be a shift of cost. I mean, if the IT department was involved with managing them, or whoever's involved with managing, there, there would be a shift of cost from, you know, printing out, you know, paper poll books to managing a fleet of computers, and managing that fleet of computers ongoing, and replacement cost and whatnot. So, yeah, the man-hours would, would have to change to folks with, you know, technical, technical skills. Another concern, I guess I would, would point out is kind of the rollout plan, you know, if, if there's five additional counties and Minnehaha that would be rolling this out at, at the next election, I would certainly think that Heart Interseptic and the state would be extremely busy. So when there's that area of responsibility and, and, you know, they talk about reimaging them, could be done by the state, might be done jointly with the county, I want more detail about what that really means, might be done jointly with the county.
Yeah.
Other questions? Other comments?
Commissioner Beckett? Well, if I can just echo a little bit about what Dick was talking about, you know, if there's a problem at a voting center, then the appropriate response would be to provide a provisional ballot, to go ahead and to take that and to hold it. The concern I have, though, is that if there is a problem with the e-poll books, or is there, if there is a glitch in the system, that means we're gonna have to use provisional ballots. And I guess my concern right now is, you know, we don't have, we don't have the e-poll books at this point, but that's just another thing not to break and to slow down the process, and that would eliminate the need for a provisional ballot. So I would like to have some of the more questions that we brought up here answered before we, as the county commission, vote to go to one precinct. And also, as we sit as the, you know, canvas for the Board of Elections for Minnehaha County, we also have that responsibility as well, as well as our auditor. So the concerns that our IT have related to this, I think, gives us an opportunity to get some of these answers before I'm willing to cast a yes vote. I don't know how everybody else feels.
Ken, did you have any comments? You were shaking your head a couple times. Yes, most...
They were answered.
They were answered, okay. Thank you. Is there a timeframe on this, Bob, that needs to be, you need to come?
You know, Secretary of State and the vendor both need sufficient time to do this here, and then I would like an opportunity, maybe we defer this here to, to try to answer Dick and John's questions. I thought they were pretty pertinent, and I really honestly hadn't thought about them. And I would dig you up and answer for them, whatever that is. You know, the, the other part about, I'd like to address the provisional ballot thing. Provisional ballot thing is given out when, when somebody comes up on the, they're not on the, the polling list for that precinct, or they're not on there at all, and that's when we give the provisional ballot out. If there, there's no connectivity to that machine, you can still vote on it, and that information will be loaded onto that tablet. And then later on, when we figure out the problem, it would go into the system, so you would have real time. That's, that's the distinction there.
Well, I'll tell you what, oh, well, I'm sorry. I, you're talking to the guy that had an eight-circuit brief and my computer crashed? That was a long afternoon.
I would also tell you that the tablets in front of you are tasked to do quite a bit more than these here. They're singular in purpose, they cannot go online with them, they just have the one function, which really mitigates a lot of the security concerns.
Commissioner Heiberg?
What's the cost of a printed, of printing the e-poll book, not the e-poll books, but the books that each precinct has?
You know, we have that done at IT, and my understanding was somewhere between $24 and $2,500, unless I, you're asking me to draw on my memory, huh?
Oh, if it's $2,400, and we already have to spend an extra $1,200 to print additional ballots if we go to e-poll books.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
I've seen these poll books in action, and I, I actually am impressed with how they work. I just am not sure that we're ready. I'd like to, I'd like to find out the legal consequences of one precinct. I'd like to see if there's a way to roll them out incrementally instead of the whole county at once. I'd like to make a motion to defer action till the 13th of January, which I think is the second Tuesday. That's my motion.
I'll say it.
You have a motion and a second to defer?
Mr. Chairman, he says it's the 14th.
Second Tuesday, hasn't got a date on it.
The 7th and 14th, yes. 7th is the first meeting, 14th is the second.
Okay, 14th.
Second Tuesday, the 14th. Is there any other comments or questions?
Well, just a comment, I think we're gonna have to have a whole lot more information before anybody's, your license, at least I'm gonna support this thing. I got, including the single precinct connectivity and the cost, you know, we, I don't know if it's gonna cost more or less than what the present system costs, but right now to me, it's, it's horribly confusing, and I can't imagine how confusing it's gonna be to the voters.
Commissioner Beckett?
Well, and I, I guess the question I have is, is Lincoln County at least, you know, gonna be included in this next rollout? And if they weren't, why were they eliminated? Good heavens, we have half the city sitting in Lincoln County. Talk about an odd lot.
Commissioner, they, Paula Fait has opted not to pursue this here, and I don't know if her pending exit would have anything to do with that or not.
It's a good question, though.
Commissioner Barth?
This is all coming from Help America Vote funds, and we need to make, make it help people vote and not in any way hinder them. And I, my hope would be that we find a way to improve security, make it easier for people to vote, et cetera. And right now, I think we're just not ready.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I can see the way this is going, I'm not gonna read the rest of this here, because I'll be wasting your time, but I would like to, you know, after this is over, have the ability to contact each one of you with your questions and put them in writing so I can get answers to them.
Sure.
And I can't, you know, I don't know what the answer is to, those are very good questions that you two guys had, something I hadn't considered. I'm not sure if the Secretary of State has, if it's come up in one of the other elections, but I could find out the answer for you.
Well, I don't believe we need to put these in writing necessarily, that, that this was brought to the commission to be discussed, you can't answer an awful lot of the questions. And that leaves us with more questions than answers when we're leaving this argument.
Well, Commissioner, if you don't put them in writing, how am I gonna know how to answer? How am I gonna know what the question is?
Well, I mean, it's just, okay, nevermind.
We can help you with the questions, that's not an issue. I think the, the tape will also be available if you have questions of clarity, but, you know, the discussion that we've had today is important, because when this thing goes out to the general public, they have to understand it, and right now, I think we're having a little difficulty understanding it specifically, the single precinct issue, and then the combination of Lincoln County and Minnehaha County and the city. Those are legitimate questions that need to be answered before we move ahead with this. So I also like the conversation about a test site versus doing it county-wide, because anytime I've ever worked on an IT project, it's been tested significantly in one particular location before we move it forward. And the other thing is the connectivity, which has been brought up generally on a regular basis, I think that has to be part of the test site, is to make sure that that test site is in a rural setting, along with the possibility of an urban setting, and frankly, I think IT needs to be involved in the technical part of connectivity, because I don't have that ability. I can read meters, but that's not really what we're involved with here.
I just have one question, maybe I'm totally wrong. Didn't we at one point on one election have a vote-anywhere deal?
Yeah, we did.
And which election was that? Was it a city, county? I, I mean, I, we did this thing once.
It was the school district.
And the city, the city, for the event center.
So I could have, at the event center, I could have voted at IPC, or I could have gone down here, or wherever I wanted to vote.
Yep.
Yeah, I think Bev already addressed that once, and, do you wanna come forward and reiterate, please?
So the event center, we had to, I was superintendent for that one, we had to go to your own precinct to vote.
Correct.
But the 2010, 2011, 2012, 2013 school board elections, you could vote anywhere. The 2012 election was combined with the city's commission and charter amendments and all of that. That was a combined, and they could vote anywhere there as well. We're hoping to do that again in April for the mayor and all those initiatives and the charter amendments as well.
But there won't be any county conversations on that election at all?
Right.
Okay. I think that's the point we've all struggled with a little bit, is the rural county, so to speak.
And we do, we do have much of the city down below 57th Street. And I know in past elections, when the city has had an election, I've been superintendent at elections for many, many years, that we've had to send voters who vote in Lincoln County down to Lincoln County to vote for their Lincoln County things, and they could vote in Sioux Falls for their Sioux Falls things.
That's a problem.
So that's kinda bad when you gotta send a voter to two different... So that's kind of bad, when you've got to send a voter to two different locations to vote.
Yep, yep, sure.
I always hate to get rid of a voter, you know, when you tell them, when I was at Memorial as a superintendent and told these voters that they had to go over to the church at the gate, or they had to go to Discovery to vote, he never knew if they actually did that, or if he lost that voter that day.
Right.
And so my thinking has always been, you get them in the precinct, you find a way to let them vote.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Bob, do you have any more?
I did have one other thing, you know, and Jeff's, to Jeff's, you know, conversation about doing the 71 precincts with the e-poll books, and that interests me a lot, because I think it might be one of these things where we roll it out, and, you know, we could minimalize any problems that we have, and certainly find out about them. However, due to current state law, I cannot have an e-poll book and a paper poll book at the same time. Would I like to change that state law? Yes, I would, but that's one of the peculiarities. So your fail-safe of having that paper poll book to go back to in that, you know, circumstances, simply not there.
I got a feeling that may be addressed at the next legislative session also, because I don't think that was too well thought through, to be honest.
We would do a motion, do we?
Yes, we do have a motion and a second to defer this until the second meeting in January. And there's a debate on when that is.
The first meeting is on the 7th, I know that for sure, and then the second one will be seven days later.
We got it on the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we'll see you second week of January.
Thank you for your extensive time on this matter. Appreciate your input.
Item number 15 is consider a motion to approve the appointments of Roger Trevine and Arthur Krenz III to the Sulan Heritage Museum Board of Directors effective January 1, 2014. Bill Hoskins.
Bill Hoskins, Director, Sulan Heritage Museums. This would be to consider an appointment of Roger Trevine, who's a CPA with Ida Bailey, to a three-year term on the Sulan Heritage Museum's board, as well as Arthur Krenz III. Arthur is a retired contractor, general contractor in the community. County has four appointments on the museum board, the city actually has four as well. Two individuals, Tim Shendel has completed his second three-year term, as has Sandy Dean, and so they cannot be reappointed for another term at this point. And so both Arthur and Roger submitted applications through the commission office for positions on the museum board, and I would recommend.
I'll make a motion to approve those two appointments.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve Mr. Trevine and Mr. Krenz. Any other comments? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 Rural Ambulance Quality Assurance Contract between Dr. Jeff Luther and Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
Commissioner, we have a number of contracts that we look at at year-end, and that we bring into you for your consideration, and this is the one with the quality assurance provider for our rural ambulance service. This is with Dr. Jeff Luther, and it is an annual contract in the amount of $30,000 for 2014. This contract was at $28,000 for 2013. I anticipate this one will be a little bit more extensive next year, because I think we do need to do a review of our ambulance licenses again, based on the new ordinance, and we reduce the timeframe is when we review those licenses. Dr. Luther has looked at this agreement, and he's agreed to do the work for specified. One of the things that we've been working with him, and that for the last month, is to bring in a report to you about the, what this level of activity has been for the last year, and that, and to make sure that he, and he's going through all those run reports right now to take a look at those, to put together his report. So, again, this is just one of many annual contracts that we have that we'll be bringing to you between now and year-end for continuation.
Commissioner Hybarger.
I just have one question. I don't remember the answer, and you kind of touched on this, but is it part of that contract that says at the end of the year, before renewal, that we get a report?
Yes.
Okay, I was just looking for a date. Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have discussed whether or not we felt we needed a quality assurance director during budget times.
You did.
And if I remember correctly, the last time we talked about it, we didn't want to do anything then, because we were having ambulance license renewals, and all of a sudden we're having ambulance license renewals again. And, so I kind of get the feeling we don't want to talk about it, but we've gone through this issue, and then nothing happens, I guess I'm correct?
Well, you have, and you've gone through this issue, and you discussed it this last time at budget time as well, and that, but the end result was that you did allocate funds for 2014 specifically for this purpose, and that, for its quality assurance. So yes, it's an issue that you've talked about a number of times, and that, and whether or not it's worth having. One of the things on the ambulance licensing, you will recall that we did do, we used to have a four-year renewal period, and I believe that during the last, you know, when we brought on new licenses, particularly in the southeast quadrant of the county, and that we shortened that licensing period, I believe, to two years, and that, so that's one of the reasons, you know, that, and our ordinance is structured as such, that the person who fills this role does in fact play a big role in reviewing those license applications and measuring qualifications, you know, and making recommendations for licensing issues.
Is this a one-year or two-year contract?
It's one year. We do this on an annual basis.
Okay. Commissioner Beckett.
No, I understand the city of Sioux Falls is currently reviewing, I believe, applications for their ambulance licensure. I think so. And so if, depending on the circumstance, whoever gets that particular license for the city of Sioux Falls, obviously could end up having some rural areas of Minnehaha County. So we could, at that point, depending on who gets that agreement, we may have an agreement with, let's say, one of our licensees like Rural Metro, assuming they get the agreement, we don't have a problem. But if they don't, then we'd have inconsistency within our model, correct?
Yeah, because right now, I mean, if Rural Metro, for whatever reason, was no longer in business or couldn't respond, I mean, our licensing, we would have to revisit that issue for that district that Rural Metro currently serves in the rural area.
Right.
Because that was a specific license to that company for that area. And that, so yes, that would be an issue that we would have to revisit if we had a major change like that.
And a person that could help us visit that would be someone like Jeff Luther.
Correct. Commissioner Barth.
Mr. Chairman, each ambulance service in Minnehaha County has their own quality assurance medical person on board. They are not all dependent on Dr. Luther. Our dependence is on Dr. Luther, and I've got to say that, over these last seven years, we've gotten precious little information from Dr. Luther, and I'm not going to support this.
May I say one thing?
Certainly.
And that, again, our ordinance is structured right now, that talks about what the duties of a person of this, and some of the requirements to measure the effectiveness of our ordinance. My own personal opinion, and I'll say it's professional opinion, too, if anything this past year has taught me with the operation of things that are medically provided, the fact of having someone with the accreditation and oversight over that operation, and that to help steer you through those shark-infested waters, even though they may not do it a lot, it still provides you some safety net for the tasks that we're asked to do.
Yep.
In three-plus years, that might be the most politically astute comment I've ever heard.
I just think that potentially we could use the information that each ambulance service gives to their own quality assurance person as what we need for our ordinance.
Thank you. Commissioner Beckett?
I always, you know, and Jeff, I think that's value, but remember who's paying for it. Because I'm the licensing board, you're the licensing board, I'd rather hear from my guy than their guy, and how great they are, so.
Commissioner Kelly?
But Jeff, you helped me on this, there's been some question of courts even being filed in the past, has there not?
That's true. In fact, one ambulance group said that they know that they have a requirement to turn these things over to Dr. Luther, and they've piled them up on their desk, waiting for him to call and say, where are they?
One thing I might suggest to you, and that, and I'm glad we brought it here, on the 10th, if you would like to defer this, and that until, and again, we've been in communications with Dr. Luther for over a month, and that to make sure that he brings this report in to you, and that, and if you would like to wait before you consider the contract and hear Dr. Luther's report, we can certainly do that.
Make a motion to defer action.
Second.
For until the 10th.
No, we're on the 10th. We're on the 10th.
To the 17th, then.
Sorry. There's a problem with dates today. So your motion is to defer until next week?
Yes, sir.
That's okay with a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second to defer until January 7th, December.
Time travel, it's a tough thing.
How far we've been here? December 17th. Any comments, questions? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Item 17 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 IVC housing contract between Carroll Institute and Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, this is the 2014 contract between the county and Carroll Institute to house IVCs, wherein those are folks that are awaiting an involuntary commitment to a state institution and have been part of that process. And this is in lieu of holding those folks in jail and/or detox, and that this was a program that we instituted this past year, and we've had some very good comments about this. In fact, I had a, one of the attorneys that handles the IVCs on a regular basis just came up to me and told me how pleased he was, and how this process has been working, how much better it was for his clientele, and how helpful the folks at Carroll Institute have been with this program. As you know, we discuss this at budget time, and that the contract amount in 2013 was $216,175, and we're going to be looking at $222,660 for 2014, so just a modest increase, and that to push that program through the whole year. And so this is a one-year contract from January 1 to December 31, 2014. And it's in a separate line item in the budget. This is not in the commission office budget anymore.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Carroll Institute. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item 18 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 animal control contract between Sioux Falls Humane Society and Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
This is the 2014 contract with the Humane Society. It's, as you know, the 2014 budget contains an allocation of $47,000, which was the same allocation in 2013, to provide animal control services. A part of this contract of that $47,000 is used, that we pay them a flat monthly rate for their services, that covers primarily the daytime hours, but the balance of that contract, and that covering the, we pay extra for off-hours, and that when they have to respond after five, or on weekends, or on an emergency basis, and that, and so all other provisions are, the contract are the same as what it was in 2013, even the dollar amounts, and that, and we would recommend your approval.
Any questions, Ken?
Make the motion, second.
Motion and a second to approve the contract with the Humane Society. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Item 19 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 Minnehaha County Regional Detention Center per diem contracts between Minnehaha County and partner counties. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, yes, you know, we are winding down on our 20-year commitment with our partner counties, and that for the regional juvenile detention center, and we've, obviously, we've had a lot of issues, and we're working with them in order to go out and perhaps renew that. But this is the renewal, this is the actual per diem agreements with those partner counties for when they actually use the center. And we have been on a track for the last few years in anticipation of, you know, rolling out our new system, if we get to that point, of just simply increasing the per diem rate for secure detention by $5 a day, particularly since we've been in this flux with our population numbers due to JDAI. So this agreement reflects raising our secure detention per diem cost for our partner counties from $150 to $155 per day, and then the non-secure or shelter care detention that happens out at BOA, that's being raised from $110 to $115 per day, so another five bucks a day. And that, this was an item that we were going to discuss last week during our regional advisory board with our counties, and that, and to prep them for this. Unfortunately, we got delayed by a snowstorm that happened on that particular day, so we are recommending that we get the per diem agreements out as soon as we can to our partner counties, because we do have, in our joint cooperative agreements and other contracts, we just, we have to have these back in order to maintain their place in the partnership by December 31st. So we just need to get, we couldn't afford to wait, you know, to reschedule that meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth?
Plan to support it, but Ken, are we, is Minnehaha County subsidizing the partners in this, or is this actually the cost to us?
No, this is not actually the cost, but I would also ask you to remember two things. Number one, our partner counties also pay an annual debt service fee that they pay at the beginning of the year. And that, for the cost, that, you know, if you're a non-member county, you're not doing that, you're just paying on a per day. The other thing that, quote, makes the actual cost somewhat difficult to predict, and it's something from our own doing, is simply because, you know, there are standardized fixed costs for that facility, but our population numbers have fluctuated so much due to JDAI, and that's one of the reasons we're trying to get that, you know, narrow down and stabilize on what that population is, and that, so that we can better allocate secure dollars to non-secure resources. And so that complicates the situation, but that's of our own doing as well, simply because of our numbers have dropped so far. And when you just simply take a look at list, kids in a fixed-cost facility, that cost does in fact go up. But again, since we're so close to the end of the partnership, and that, and these counties have been on board for 18 years, this was the reason that we've adopted this philosophy of the $5 increase until we get to the end of the agreement, and then we'll do new agreements, so.
Make a motion to approve the per diem contract.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the regional detention center contracts. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Any liaison reports this morning? If not, any new business?
Do you have something?
Shannon, did you have something? Old business? Under new business, Sarah, thank you for being here this morning, and especially for two hours in your condition, I think you ought to get a medal for that. Any old business?
Commissioner Shannon, Shiloh, Minnehaha County Department of Senior Project Engineer, you have heard me talk about the payment management system that RFP is still being worked on, on the contract. The reason for the most recent delay is Monti requested that we pursue the idea of having those services provided on the consultants or the vendors' websites or servers. We ran the gamut of those options, came up with costs, and it was decided to not pursue that, so the original proposal to host it in-house has been decided upon and approved by Monti, as well as DJ Booth, the highway superintendent. And so the final contract will be drafted today or tomorrow. Monti will review, the DOT through CCOG will then review, and then the consultant will review, and hopefully, I'm hopeful, that by the end of the year, we will have assigned and executed contracts, and then we can actually name who that vendor is.
Commissioner Hybarger?
Some concerns with that. Some concerns with that, were the storage of all the information from the pavement management system going on the IT. When I talked to DJ yesterday, I suggested that there's a memorandum of understanding between the highway department and the IT department that in the future, when their space runs out in the IT department because of the amount of pavement management system that's going to go on it, that highway will be responsible for those costs and that was their agreement to sign this contract. But I said, I think there needs to be a memorandum of understanding going forward just because if Monti's not here or if DJ's not here, I want it to be going forward that somebody's responsible, those costs, and it's not IT. That will be coming forward too.
Thank you. Commissioner Peckus?
Well, because this is a pavement management system and it's based to help support highway, isn't it possible that we could use highway funds for this?
That's what we're talking about, that's why there's gonna be a memorandum of understanding.
Thank you for revisiting that, by the way. It was a dramatic difference in cost, from what I understand.
So, there will be a request for your execution or signature to execute the contract. I probably won't make it by Thursday at noon, but the following Thursday deadline I will make, so that would be a week from next Tuesday.
Good one.
No date in town.
Any other questions for Shannon? If not, I need a motion to go into exec session for personnel and legal briefing.
Still move. Second.
Motion and a second to go into exec session for personnel and legal. We'll be back here in five minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.